Growing up, I kid you not, that's all my grandparents ever called it, was calf slappers. And I thought it was calf slappers.
I don't leave without talking to me.
That's, I guess not.
Okay, it's working, isn't it? Can hear you guys talk about calf slappers.
How many doors will they drive?
United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, our nation and our God, in the best of all, with liberty and justice for all.
Herman Flackty? What's it? Paulson? Kerrigan? Starr? Eller? We have a forum.
All right, very good. It's welcome, everybody. Okay, now, thanks, welcome to the visitors. We're always glad to face out there. For our to the conservative agenda, I would take a motion to approve the conservative agenda.
I do have a. Um, I do have a, we had a finance meeting tonight, and um, we discussed probably primarily three things. One was the audit update, and then we did talk about what's coming before us on the public safety tax a little bit. And then also the credit and debit card process can be that we might make some recommendations on. And I'd like to go back to the audit updates, since it's not on the agenda, but maybe Kathy can kind of give us a little bit of a.
Sure. Audit is going well. As you know, we have new auditors this year, and they have taken an incredibly deep dive, which we really appreciate. Um, it took a little longer than the time they had allotted, because they did dive as deep as they did. Um, so they're working evenings and weekends now to finish us up, because they have other audits that they've got scheduled in their time. But they are still, they have everything that they need from us for the final questions, so it is, they are still communicating with us, so that's the thing as well.
And with that, I'll make a motion that we approve it, continue it.
We've been on the second, all in favor, six zero, consented, had his approval, next on to the mayor report. Uh, did it on the fourteenth, they did ribbon cutting, deep body therapy, has a neat place, I don't think you guys have any body therapy, it's out there. By the, the mini mart grocery stores, they got a neat place in there. Um, I recommend if you got any sap, sciatic or anything like that, body check now. Um, went on the sixteenth, went out to uh, they helped Rotary younger uh, meeting out at the VFW, went out there, in a red car, and there she works again. Rotary, he does a tremendous job in this neighborhood. Uh, they, I am so in awe of everything they do for this community, and they say it behind the scenes with most of them. So uh, my, my, we had, but that was for World Polio Day, it was same proclamation I read on, probably the other, the previous meeting. Uh, Chalk the Walk, the Optimus Club, had one day out of the two for that, but it looked like the kids had a great time. So appreciate the Optimus Club, uh, and their efforts in that, the Chamber of Commerce, Tricker Downtown, Tricker Creek, man, oh man, okay. There were a lot of people in this downtown Tricker Creek, and that took a lot of effort to pull that off. I had talked to the Chamber of Commerce for that. A lot of people had a lot of fun, grownups, kids, everybody. And uh, I would like to, we have some uh, great athletics of just put athletic prowess, I guess, if you want to call it that, uh, from our high school. We have a lot of stuff, a lot of things we're proud of with our high school athletes, uh, this week. Uh, they are our D C champion Odessa Bulldogs, once again. Um, they have a Bible this week, but they'll be back in action on November seventh, right here in, in Odessa. Uh, and the lady softball, uh, Lady Dog softball team, they were district champs. And congratulations to them, they went, they advanced to state quarterfinals. Uh, the Lady Dog tennis team, they were also had some state qualifiers. And the boys and girls cross country took second place, both, both teams, uh, with and girls, took second place in conference tournament. So, that's fantastic. Uh, I like, I like to see them, see our Bulldogs uh, doing good. Uh, I wanted to, I did want to mention that there is vacancies, uh, within some boards. Uh, we have a vacancy on the planning and zoning board. We also have a board vacancy, um, the board adjustments. So that, that was just announced, so uh, those are the announced board vacancies, and um, there, I don't know, Donna, you okay? Okay, uh, Alderman, uh, Eller will be leaving the community shortly. She's on doing new adventure in her life. We all wish her the best. And uh, so there will be an appointment to be made for Ward Two for Alderman person uh, there. So I would really uh, encourage people that if they have any recommend, recommendations for any of these seats, to please reach out to the city administrator or myself. Uh, we always appreciate referrals when it comes like this, uh, to represent our community, so. And that's just all I have. Uh, I also want to go, Alderman reports, Mike, have nothing tonight, sir.
Uh, just one second. One of the mayors said about Donna, uh, she's been a great asset to the city for her continuing service. Um, you'll be missed, and Liberty's getting a good outfit, too, to choose to try and serve there as well. Um, second, like the mayor said, there's vacancies coming up. We have an election next spring. Uh, the city's done, done a good job of trying to update their website. I am going to try to make a post on Facebook to direct people to that website for those that would, are interested. Just learn the process, learn what's required, what's not required, and how to go through it. And if you have any interest, please reach out to any of us. We'd be more than willing to help coach you through it. Um, and help you learn how to do it, what it does and doesn't entail. And please, Karen is a great resource for that. She runs the process and the program. Please, if there's any interest in you getting involved in the city in this, in this business, please reach out. Let's, let's try and help you become a member of that. So, that's all I have.
And so, following what you said about the downtown Halloween, um, add on, thanks to the businesses, the churches, lots of families were out, so. It was good to see.
It was good.
I'm not a United issue.
Went to an M M L meeting, uh, with Sean and Kathy last week, I believe it was, to try to learn something about the property tax discussion that's going on at Jefferson City. Didn't learn very much about it. I don't know, there was worth a twenty dollar meal and, and the trip for that, but it was a good discussion all the way down and all the way back with, with Sean and Kathy. Looking forward to meeting, uh, later this week, hopefully with Ty Wells and Erica Jones on the, um, suggestions from the uh, uh, food truck businesses and, and downtown collaborative on suggestions they had. So that, uh, very good.
Yeah, and this is, I think we did get a meeting on Karen, you did get the website completely updated.
Yes, sir.
For the election information.
Yes, sir.
If you put on that link, uh, all three awards, Alderman position for the seat available for all three awards and the mayor's, uh, seat is also uh, something we think stick to one for. So, um, that's like, the, it's November ninth, it was the first.
No, no, I believe it's December.
December.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because November tenth is the call for the election.
December ninth is the first date file.
Correct, yeah. And then December thirtieth will be the last.
December thirty. And like, I, I was hoping Karen gets said, you got any questions about any of that? Call city hall, talk to Karen, she is our expert. All right, moving on.
Uh, an old, old business, right into new business.
Okay, I will be quick, because Mickey has a football game to get to.
Right.
Okay, so, um, uh, myself and, um, that's the police department, as a management to the M P R, um, this past week. So risk management training, um, overall, how to be a better leader, better manager to your staff. So it was a really great training, and I appreciated all of the effort that M P R put into it. Um, I did notice though that Branson is starting to put up their Christmas decorations. So, uh, next week, Lindsay will be, or the Parks Department will be starting on the magic tree. And then this week, uh, our crews are getting the decorations to the watershed on First Street. So Chamber can go through and blow up and fix the bows and do all the things that they do to beautify those, um, after your storage. So, um, they'll be doing that this weekend, and then starting next week, the electric crew will start, uh, hanging everything up, so. So let you know that's coming down, and, um, we're starting to do some of the winterizing. All of our outdoor activities for Parks and Recreation are complete for the year. So Joey's starting to do the air raiding and, uh, winterizing, like the ball fields and, uh, batting cages and things like that. We currently have basketball signups for K through sixth grade, um, open now until November ninth. Um, and those are ran by Coach Wible and Coach Jake Doyle. Um, Partners for the Park is moving forward with a feasibility study for their, um, seventy seven acres south of town. And we are in discussion with Partners for the Park and the Chamber of Commerce to apply for a state funded grant for the Parks Department to potentially add a bathroom at Dartford. It's a war to come off that. For the wastewater department, and they finished, uh, processing the solids for the year, um, without any major issues. Uh, we have a main breaker down and have the soundings planned, so we're getting some process minutes for that. Uh, we'll be testing the portable generator here at the community building soon. Um, and with the Ninth Street project, just a quick, quick update, cat exhibition, they have or are really close to receiving the new pump stations. There's two new pump stations that they've been waiting for the parks for. So those are, have arrived, and they'll be installing those, they've been installed next week depending on weather. Um, classes are finishing up for wastewater crews, and that's it for wastewater. For finance, we have started budget preparations. So each department director is now, um, kind of thinking through what they would like to, um, add or, uh, re-revise with the next year's budget, twenty twenty six, twenty twenty seven fiscal year. Uh, we have an all staff meeting Friday at ten A M, so sitting home will be close for that. Um, that consists of a presentation from Paypoint H R, who's doing the compensation study. They'll present to staff, um, expectations, what the study would look like and how it will impact them. And then we're following that up with some strategic plan, deep dive with all of our employees, and, uh, providing lunch as well, so. We're excited for that. We don't do old bone staff trainings and things like that often, so it's very exciting when we aren't able to do so. Um, good to do. Jenny Neal joined our team today as the Community Development Coordinator, and she, Thursday one, she seemed to enjoy it. She said it went by very fast. That's good. We hope she's back tomorrow. And by the Streets Department, so, uh, Water Department, I should say, the center column and the basin at the water plant is down again. Um, so Michael came, and they are rebuilding a motor for that, so. Um, definitely something to consider in our budget this year, um, as we've had numerous repairs on the, the basin in the past few months, so. Uh, to, the paper was down last week, so that in, um, set us back just a little bit on completing the street plan. Only thing we have left is Binning Street, so, um, they hope, they're hoping to get that paper back this week. And hopefully, depending on whether we have a lot of rain, but potentially getting vending done, um, here in the next couple of weeks, all dependent on weather. And we do have, um, just a little bit of excess funds that we've had discussions about possibly, um, skim coating Marion Street. So, uh, we'll do that based on available dollars. Uh, with the Electric Department, so they have, or are very close to completing their, um, project that they've been working on to in the Russell Second Street area, um, where they have been moving overhead allowance to underground, so that project's almost complete. And then their next project will take place in the park to do the same. There's some we hope will have to underground, all a part of the bigger game plan with, um, conversions and things like that, so. Moving right along on that, and then we have two open positions, so we'll be going through the applications and hopefully setting up interviews this week. And, uh, we do have one bucket trunk with the department that has a few transmission issues that we're, um, trying to figure out a solution for. Okay, and then for the Police Department, Josh is out this week, so, um, Captain Lucy will be filling in. Uh, Watkins out. They do have shop for cops scheduled for December thirteenth. And this week, Bailey is out on, at an animal control conference. I don't know, overall normal operation for community, and from a staff's perspective, the downtown sugar tree went very well, so. That's all I have. Thank you, Josh.
Any further comments tonight? Saying nothing, we're going fast. You said that?
Okay.
You said hi. Moving on to new business. First up, resolution, uh, proposed resolution number twenty twenty five and twenty nine, a briefing disposition of police records that have met the required retention period in accordance with Part of C M O, chapter one oh nine, and applicable state retention statutes. Discussion. No discussion, I'll take the motion approved.
I'm motion to approve a resolution number twenty twenty five dash twenty nine, dispossessment of records.
Got a motion in second, all in favor, six zero, resolution passed. Up, this, the discussion, uh, at the September twenty second, board of all the relating, on one another, requested a discussion regarding the global things that are cities, and board of all the remaining downs, leaves the motion. We got a finance director, Thompson, the officer.
Okay, I, I tried to make things as plain as it can be. The reality of it is, we budgeted a hundred and seventy four thousand dollars for credit card processing fee. We have been assuming that cost on behalf of our consumers since the COVID shutdown hit. Um, prior to COVID, we passed that on to the consumers during COVID, we said, let's make it easier for everyone to not get close to each other and encourage this pain on our line. Um, since then, the, um, usage and the cost of that usage has grown exponentially. And so we need to have the discussion of what would the board like to see us do in the future, moving forward? Do we want to consist, continue to take that cost on behalf of those consumers? Do we want to pass it on to the consumers? And I just wanted to open that up for discussion with you guys, and answer any questions you may have. Well, the Finance Committee, uh, we did, we did have a little, we talked about this in some detail. Um, Bruce had some comments too, but I think our consensus was when we looked at what, uh, I, that we just passed this convenience fee on to, and they're like Concordia does. Um, that there's a lot of moving parts in there, different fees, um, we talked about maybe doing a, you know, the convenience fee like Oak Grove does, but I think we just, we kind of just thought that we would recommend maybe just passing this fee on over. So Kathy, tell us again, so if you're paying with, uh, with a debit or credit card, the fees can vary.
Yeah, so depends on, um, who your card is with, if it's MasterCard or Discover, or Rewards Points here or there, yonder. The fee, the transaction fee, that each of those cardholders charges is different, and it's different. You and I both may have a MasterCard, but we may have different fees on our MasterCard, depending on what program it is, so. It's all over the place. It would be incredibly difficult for staff to go through all of the utility bills and try to figure out how they're paying and split that out. If we were to pass it on like the Finance Committee discussed earlier, we would be taken out of that equation completely. So the, the finance fee, the convenience fee is charged to the processor. It's not funded through the city, paid by the city, managed by the city in those things.
And as you can, if you look at this, you can tell that every town does it just a little bit differently. And none of these absorb it like we have been doing. We just can't afford, um, to do that. So, uh, if, if we were looking at doing a, a convenience fee like one of them does, what Kathy just said, it would be hard to come up probably with that figure, because it seems to be every card, every payment is different. And then again, the ones that are paying by cash or, you know, not using credit cards are kind of absorbing this as well, and that's not quite. Um, we also felt like, I'll just say that passing the convenience fee on, well, I don't think it's going to really push everybody to all of a sudden go to cash or, you know, check. I, I feel like in this day and age, people will pay with credit card, you know, for the convenience of it. So, I mean, we might see a little bit of that, you know, changing from paying online to cash or check, you know, but we, I, I guess we'll see, but we just felt like in the Finance Committee that there probably would be a big bump in that, so.
Um, and I think that my big thing was, I don't think that the city absorbing the cost, if the trend continues, it'd be projected to be three hundred and forty thousand, seven hundred and thirty four dollars. That is not an expense that I feel like the city should absorb for for this, I mean, that's a lot of money that can be used other places that we need, so.
That's a street fund.
Wow.
Like equivalent to, yeah.
So then, Drew. I'm sorry. They don't, I mean, whenever you use your credit card anywhere else, they charge you, you know?
Most groups.
So, you know, I don't see, I don't see where it would be unfair. I don't know, wording gives me something we can afford to do.
I, I mean, we just can't afford, you know, that's.
So you want to talk about that budget amount that you maybe we can?
Yeah, so we, we basically got three decisions to make. Number one, does the city want to continue paying? My opinion, we can't afford to pay. Number two, i- if we're not going to pay it and pass it on to the, the customers, I mentioned, what they do, we want to do that. And number three, if we don't continue to do it, we're going to save in our budget a hundred and seventy four thousand dollars if we budget it this year. What are we going to use those savings for? Where, where are we going to allocate that, those savings? Uh, we could put it on the streets, we could put it on our utility costs. And consider that when we, uh, set our utility rates next April the first. We could put it any place we want to in our budget, so we've got three basic decisions to make.
So, point of clarification, you say we have a hundred and seventy four thousand dollars this year? I thought we already spent it.
Well, we have.
Yeah, so it would be next year.
Yeah, we won't be budgeting that amount next.
Correct. It would be next year when we would see that savings month.
Yes.
Yeah.
And to be fair, that discussion could happen during our budget workshop as well. Give you guys some time to think about where it could be best to get a lot of us.
So we thought maybe January one would be a good time to start this, and staff thought that that could be accomplished. That day could probably be accomplished with the processing, you say, you know, city staff. And then we kind of thought that we should just do what Concordia's nice, we'll just pass all of it. So that's kind of what we are recommending.
Anybody disagree? How much does that put us over our budget of one seventy four? Sort of one seventy right now, what would you project that possibly take on? Two, two.
I would say another twenty two thousand dollars a month until we get.
So you're the two hundred and fifty five?
Yeah, it's running between twenty two and twenty five thousand a month.
So my question would be, not that I want to incur this, but where are we finding that in the budget to, to come up with our work call? We have to incur that.
We are in hurry that.
Yes.
Something we've got to look at.
We know where that's going.
It kind of just depends on how the budget falls at the end, and how much is actually needed of it, yeah. If there's, um, a surplus of funds, then it, it kind of offsets it, but if that, because it's in each of the three public works departments, so if that fund, um, utilizes all of their other line items and, and ha- has no other choice, then we'll have to come from reserves.
And, and I'll say that when we did, went through the budget, it was at nine thousand or something to that, and I mean, it went, it just like pop, bumped, and then it went to like fifteen and then seventeen, so we've been watching it. And then when it reached thirty thousand, it was like we said, but part of that is because now people are, are paying more online, and that's really, you know, what we want, so. So we, it's not like we haven't been watching it, it just got crazy real quick.
Okay, so the direction for the board is to pass on the fees to the customers and try to make that happen by January first, am I hearing that correct?
Yeah, that's what I think the Finance Committee is kind of recommending.
That the bill due with Jane. Correct? Is that what we're thinking?
Yes.
Facility bill due, Jane. Welcome.
Yeah, and, yeah.
So it'll be.
It's really December's bill.
December's bill. For payable in January. Do we need a motion or anything?
I just want to say we'll try our best to accomplish that, just in case it's not a hundred percent possible, January or February's bill.
Yeah.
Just in case.
No, sorry.
Thank you for the nice.
Thank you. Two, if you do, that would be for January.
Yeah, but the revenue comes in to, the revenue would come into the city starting on February fifteenth, not January fifteenth. But in our fiscal year's April, so. As soon as we can.
All right, uh, next up for discussion, uh, something that I, I wanted to talk about, and it's about the downtown sidewalk piece. We all got tested up, this, all this is a framework, this is not an official policy, and in practice, it's just a rough draft, so to speak. Uh, but we need to, we need, we need to think about how these downtown sidewalks, they are going to come. And the more of this concrete, you know, there, there, this changes the whole landscape of downtown. Um, it's, it, it changes their whole, uh, you have our downtown structure, economic developments involved, and a lot of things to think about. But what we want to try to do is go, think of ways that we can preserve and protect this huge investment that we make. I mean, it's a lot of money, and we want to do this, we want to protect, we, we want to protect this streetscape, while at the same time, we want to promote, you know, a safe, attractive environment for the residents, for the visitors that come here, uh, for businesses, but we don't want to make it so stringent that our businesses can't build things on the sidewalk, and they can't make it nice for themselves and do what they need to do for the business. So this is just the tip of the iceberg as far as talking about the downtown sidewalks. But we need to think, we need to be proactive and get a, a policy in place before they're done about their use, uh, how, how do we want to maintain, uh, we want to use chemicals on the sidewalks, there's no removal, I mean, a lot of things to discuss. And as you can tell, there's a lot of things in that policy that, that can kind of give us a guideline. And are there anything, if you just kind of skim through this, do you see anything you like, anything you dislike? Go ahead.
What did we get? So did we get it from another town?
I distracted it.
You created.
Yeah.
Okay, and we don't have any kind of restrictions or policy in place right?
No.
I did not know that.
No, we have no policy in place in how we purposefully discuss it. So, um, the sections during this are applicability, general principles, prompt fixtures, now that, that deals with things like uh, all our amenities are going to be affixed to this, permanently to the sidewalks. But we want to allow the people that, that have their stuff to permanently fix things to the sidewalk. I wouldn't think so. But, go ahead.
One of the things that pops in my mind in, um, you know, the flags, the poles, and we'll know, once we get our new sidewalks in, those poles and those where, where did we land on flags? Like, if they want to put flags up, they have to attach those to the building, or is that a sidewalk thing?
We can put that in here too, I would, I would.
Flags have always been a big, big thing.
Yeah, we have, uh, flag holding mounts on each of the new light poles, and they're at eighty inches high on each light pole, which is ADA compliant. High on each light pole, which is ADA compliance, so.
Maybe that's all we'll allow.
Yes. But then you also do still have, like, we've had conversations with. Um, different entities that want to put like the banners on the flag poles and things like that too, so. And I don't know if that necessarily fits in here, but something to consider.
That was the only thing I saw that maybe was in the address.
First, you have a definition of the downtown area?
I think that that's something we could probably kill two birds with one stone if we. When we approve this, we could approve an actual geo-location for downtown.
I know it's, at one time, there was a survey of the downtown. Streets prior to doing the sidewalk thing.
Oh, yeah.
Were there any sidewalks that were determined to be owned by the building owners as opposed to the city? So we're confident they're all owned by the city.
Yes. The only, the only thing that's um, an outlier on that is what's in front of the library, it's still city sidewalk. It's just not a part of the project because it was already newer cons- or uh, concrete.
Missouri law is a little. Different as far as uh, who's responsible for repairing and replacing a public sidewalk.
Yes.
So my responsibility is. Adjacent property owners and business operators are responsible for keeping sidewalks areas clean, free of debris, normal removal and in good repair. My question is about in good repair because the next one says the city retains responsibility for major infrastructure maintenance. Including concrete repair benches, trash receptacles and city installed planters. With them, with the sidewalks being concrete, what would they need to repair?
Yeah, that's fair, yep.
Are we, is it, are we envisioning something different that they might need to repair? But I think. You might be wanting to say that you've already kept the areas clean and free of debris. I think that covers just keeping it clean.
Wasn't there always an issue about the snow removal? I mean.
I think it's always been the business owners.
Yeah, and then they don't.
I think it should say snow and ice. I really would like, yeah, I mean, some people might think it's the same, it's not snowing.
Maintenance like that is the business materials. But repair, the replacement of city.
And it says that.
When you remove your snow and your ice. Probably ice removed, snow. Any kind of chemical you put down will eventually eat up.
Well, we brought up chemicals, so. I think if there's a discussion around that, it probably needs to be stayed in here, what is appropriate to remove the ice? To keep the con- keep the concrete in good repair. So if if we're going to make a decision like that, I think you got to.
Is that something the city gets supplied material?
We can just put some research into how much that would cost. Might be kind of a lot.
But it's what we're bonded here, I mean, it's not, there's something that we just.
We get it from Granger. More faulty type. Material that gets when it comes, first comes as blood. Um, we used to use this stuff. Just a white, tasty mess. Here's the problem, this, anything like this after, below a certain temperature. Doesn't work. And. Where the school district that I work at. They are. Able. About. Children should not have to step on any kind of. Winter precipitation. That's the nicest way I'm.
I guess what we're really getting at is we're going to spend all this money on wonderful new, you know, sidewalk, so. How to protect those or not just the first year, but for several years to come. When it comes to the chemicals on there, so I think that might be something.
Which concrete, just in itself, because of the earth moving and freezing and thawing a lot, it will, it eventually.
But you can go to any square and get ice melt, but what I think you're saying is that maybe we should. Try to educate or help our businesses not use. Stuff that will eat up the concrete.
Or having approved list of chemical or whatever.
Right, so that should, I think that should be at least. Include it in there if you're. And we don't want the sidewalks to get too ready.
What are we spreading on the streets? Is that just straight salt?
Salt and sand.
Salt and sand? I don't know if that. I'm not a concrete specialist, I don't know if that's appropriate or not, but. If that was the determination that salt and sand was appropriate. You could always say you can come over and get a bucket.
Any stuff that you put down. Will come in the building. Or it gets tracked.
Yeah, by the way you put it down.
Uh, yeah, so the salt and sand is great for the roads.
But other towns too.
Yeah, I can look into it, I didn't go that far.
And and be thinking about the aesthetics. Uh, we're going to have benches placed in certain positions along the side, we've been holding down very so often. Uh, but there are very nice benches in, you know, Desa now, there's a really nice finish in front of the bank of Odessa. Debbie Lewis got that first, and she remembers the board proved it, they put their two nice planters on either side of it. That's going to have to be removed, uh, with the sidewalks and obviously. Her expectation, it will be moved back to the hallway where where it is. Um, and that's a decision the board will have to make. You know, is that going to be okay? If not okay, uh, if not okay. And Ms. Lewis needs to have a chance to come in and talk to her, us about prevention, why he's here. But things like that, extra things are on the sidewalk now. What's the expectation? The the, they have to be, so it's temporary, ADA compliant. You have to get four foot walkway. From wherever the plant, whatever it is. So we we need to be thinking about that, and we might want to restrict it so much that they can't have cafe tables and these and that, you know. Those are nice things to have, they make their businesses, a lot of time they make their businesses what they are. So we don't want to. We don't want to restrict this too much, we we need to find an allowance, I guess, we'll see.
Maybe we need to take this and review it and bring it back in another.
This is just an ice break.
I like, I mean, there's a lot here for no.
There's also one other thing too, I just thought about was. Um, the handrails that'll be installed. Because their intended purpose or original purpose is for ADA compliance, so. Um, what can and cannot be, how they can and cannot be utilized from a decorative standpoint.
Maybe we need to get the sidewalks in. First, before we got a P five and that, because there might be other things that come up, right?
Yeah, well, we can always edit it if we need to, but.
I'm just, we're just trying to take it for a laugh, to make sure. To making sure we have, we find that balance.
I think we need a policy, so.
Go ahead, Hers.
And I think for the city to be the one to. Enforce as opposed to. The downtown merchants themselves. But in order for the downtown merchants themselves to do it, they kind of have a stronger group, I think, than what's there. Because they kind of need to act in unison, you know, who's, who's going to decide when? When the season is open, when all the decorations need to come down for a certain season. City want to get the position of enforcing when all the Halloween stuff needs to come down, and should it be? You know, the group of merchants, yeah.
I will say, um, Kathy and I went down to Branson for a conference. And that was at the beginning of September. And they had beautiful fall decorations with like. Old style bicycles on each light pole is really cute, and I went this past week and they had. All new fall decorations out, so they are beyond even just the four seasons of the, of the year and have even. More frequent seasonal decor that is in unison.
All right, well, yeah, this is, go ahead, Paul. Two more comments, uh. One thing going back to some snow removal. I I don't know whether we should or shouldn't, but a topic to be thought about, just to be thinking about later. Where are we putting the snow? Um, process is on that of. If if we're asking them to put the sidewalk off, they're either putting it in the street, which then people are walking or whatnot, or. Are they going to push it down to the new eardrops? What what are we going to re- require of them? Or what can we do to assist them if they get it to the street by a certain time? Can the cars aren't there, can the city come and do a quick patch? Can we do a process like that?
Yeah, that's.
Thing is, maybe this would be a good topic to talk to our downtown collective. And say, what are you guys willing to do together? Because maybe they come into and decide to do a snow removal contract. And everybody pays ten bucks a month and one person just comes and does it. And pushes it all down, for example, or maybe they're willing to set some parameters on when the seasons are and what they're willing to do. Um, they may have suggestions on what the ordinance could or couldn't be. And. And work in collaboration with.
So take a look at this, um, truck. You know, everything, dissecting, doing whatever you need to do. We'll we'll pick this up and. Takes your seat, the point of your seat, he passed on good thoughts to them. All right, so we'll close that discussion and. Next is the uh, discussion on.
Sorry, what? We were talking about the next meeting.
Okay. So I gave you guys a handout, this is just snippets from the strategic plan. Uh, uh, regarding the electric topic, so. Um, for the the final document, the problem statement that was uh. In the um, strategic plan. Was the city staging electric infrastructure lacks redundancy and dedicated funding for improvements. Leading to reliability concerns and high utility rates that hinder economic development. The success statement, so this is when the um, consultants worked with you guys to kind of pick. Decide what the dream world, if we had, you know, the magic wand, what would electric look like, so? How do we measure that success? So the statement there says, the city has established a reliable electrical backup system. Significantly reducing outages. Uh, business rates have been reconstructed to attract new industry. Enhancing Odessa's reputation as a business-friendly community. Infrastructure is prepared to support future growth and the city makes for its own power generation capabilities. Measures of success, growth in business assess valuation, decreased frequency and duration of power outages. And infrastructure readiness for industrial expansion. So, um. The pop- problem statement there in the graphic form is that they repeated and the measures of success that we, that staff worked on. Um, are as follows, so the average outage duration. And frequency reduced year over year, so those acronyms are actually. Um, there's a national standard and calculation for those different. Um, things for outage duration and frequency, so we'll use those national standards for our measures in the future. And then we also have the percentage of service areas converted, converted to. Lo- uh, larger voltage, voltage, which is the twelve four seventy. So that's, you know, we talked a lot about certain conversions. That is the ultimate goal, is that we get our fire community on the twelve four seventy, so we need to start. Tracking that and measuring how much progress we're making on an annual basis towards that goal. Uh, reduce time to restore service for major outages, so we've already kind of. Um, started adding a level of data that we didn't have before by uh, enrolling Duck and Doppler. Um, they help us a lot with. Uh, when when outage started, when it ended, we can compare that information to the information that we have internally, so. Um, putting a little bit more of that information that we have and cleaning it up, putting it on paper and tracking it. Uh, increase the number of new industrial, commercial, commercial customers added each year. So, in general, the added. The added commercial and and industrial co- customers. Um, helps level the the load, helps helps level the burden that we have when it comes to our. Uh, our electric rates and our electric costs. Um. It's generally helps balance things, so the more industrial, commercial, the more we alleviate maybe some of the burden off our residential. So. We we want to make sure that we are. Adding as much commercial and industrial as we can from an economic development standpoint to help with the financial. Um, strengthening of the electric department. So a lot of times, like if you compare us to other cities, it's very difficult to compare. Electric rates when it comes to neighboring cities and and uh. Our comparators because, one, we all have slightly different rate structures. So their classifications may be a little bit different than their classifications, but really our infrastructure needs are completely different as well. So while we have. A lot more residential, other cities may have a lot more commercial, so that changes how those classifications are created. And how they're balanced within their rate structure. So moving on to action items, so what are some of the things that we want to check off to make sure that these measures of success are moving forward? Uh, so number one, conduct, conduct a detailed rate study to ensure electric rates are fair. Cost-effective and support the long-term financial and operational sustainability of the utility. Two, develop and implement a utility communications plan, so this is a big part of um. The bigger picture, there's a lot of things that we should and can be communicating to residents to help them. Um, through whatever the season is that that we're experiencing. Um, a lot of tips, a lot of tricks, a lot of ways to reduce their their rates beyond just. Uh, within our own infrastructure, so we want to make sure that we're communicating to those residents, I know. You know, if you're a West Central Electric customer or an Evergy customer, you're likely getting emails regularly that telling you. What you can and cannot do, what you should and shouldn't be doing, or um, they have like rebate programs and things like that, so there's a lot more that we can be doing. To communicate to our customers that help them um, better understand the structure and better understand the infrastructure and then. Um, to help them benefit individually. Uh, number three, enhance operational efficiencies, outage response and system monitoring through. Phase integration of automation technologies into the electric distribution system. So there's a couple of things in here. Um, we want to become more efficient, we want to have faster, quicker response times when it comes to outages. And we want to increase our um. System monitoring through automation, so um, Troy can really dive into this a little bit further than I can, but. Uh, there's a lot of things that we can do that when there's an outage. Um, our system is relatively manual right now, when there's outage, we have the ability to manually reduce the size of the outage. Uh, but when we only have, like right now, we only have a team of three or four people. That's a little bit difficult to to manually turn those things off in a timely manner, a lot of times. The priority becomes fixing the issue rather than reducing the size of the issue. Uh, so there's a lot of things that we can do that take a a pretty significant investment, but there's. Technology and automation out there that exists that you, your system is working for you. So when there's an outage, it's, it can autom- automatically trigger to make that outage as small as possible and not impact as many residents. So then the guys can just get in there and fix whatever's needed and less and less people are impacted. Uh, number four, attract and integrate industrial and commercial customers to increase revenue. Improve load factor and enhance system efficiency, so I kind of already touched on this one. And then create a ten-year capital improvement plan, so we currently have a five-year capital improvement plan. Uh, by being able to forecast out and see these things significantly further out than what we're currently able to do. It allows us to then better plan, better fund these projects that we have. Well, I believe that's everything. So what are your thoughts, initial reactions to this section?
So, you know, um, I think it's having. Just different ways during the year to reduce the duration of our outages, I see some things that. You know, what about decrease frequency? So I don't, I don't know that much about electricity, just. So, but in this, will help decrease the frequency of outages.
So the first measure does measure both frequency and direction. I guess. I guess. I'll let Troy speak too, how. How, how do you see us improving, um, the frequency through these items, I guess?
So with just, uh, with our infrastructure, um. Yes, upgrades that we're making, just for replacement, different things, um, the upgrade on the voltage is huge.
Tree trimming too?
That one, I'll, but going to the larger, so we're divided between the forty one sixty voltage. And a twenty, a twelve four seven voltage, going to that higher voltage, well. Uh, our tree trimming. Uh, you know, having that, having that solid and, and repetitious every. Two, three years, get complete with that and then having that just right there, most of the outages are. Are tree weather related and then out. And so we can, you know, work on those things, so our infrastructure, just getting yet. Upgrades on it and our, our tree trimming and, and if those things sound.
One way that Troy explained that the difference in voltage to me is that basically the higher voltage is a lot more. Durable, I guess, is, that's not the word I'm thinking of, but if a tree trim were to get in it at the higher voltage. That tree trim is going to do less damage, if any damage, to the higher voltage line than it would to the lower voltage. So it creates a more redundant system by having the larger voltage across the entire community.
True, what's the current hurdle we have from getting everything soft over to twelve four seven?
Time, honey, time, yeah, this, um, you know, we've got, currently our load is about half. Our circuits really aren't, but it's about half. Um, and so, um. You know, it just takes a little time to, um, get the transformers and different things changed and, and, um. So when you go from a five KB, you've got insulators and different things, so you have to go switch some of those out to the fifteen Ks, just. I've been seeing more time, I actually. Then mine, but we do have that in our CIP this year. Um, and then that was just, you know, really needs to be. Um, in, in main station, so that's finished in my opinion. Um, just because once that's done, then our substation, uh, changes significantly. Um, and then we can, we'll be able to build new, if that's where the direction that we will go. We'll be able to take transformers out of the loop that are, that are sitting there, you know, even Ivan, a truck, use a lot of fuel. So, uh, we'll be able to, you know. Minimize our costs there and everything else, so, yeah, that.
Is that, is that trending to complete this FY?
So.
Cause you said it's part of the ICP, where we scheduled to do all of it, cause this ICP.
Yeah, so we budgeted about two hundred and fifty thousand for con- contract labor this year. In the CIP to do some conversions, so this is actually our first fiscal year that we contracted. Such a significant, or really anything for contracted labor beyond what our crews are able to do, so we've already kind of forecasted and seen. That we're not able to get everything that we want to do done in the time that we have in our fiscal year with the, with the size of staff that we have. So we, we started to make that investment, I think that's really kind of where's that. Putting that ten year plan together and ha- having, sorry, having the plan to, okay. This year, we're gonna put two hundred and fifty thousand towards circuit conversions, each time we do that, we're gonna get a little bit more knowledgeable about what it takes. What we have to, you know, have assistance with and how far that's gonna get us in, in accomplishing our goals.
How can we get our rate study done this year?
Um, so yeah, we've talked a little bit about this internally, a rate study is not budgeted in this fiscal year. But, um, if it's your direction, we are able to, if you guys give staff the direction to, we can. Um, start putting that together, a lot of things, we, you know, we have a lot of game plans for this fiscal year. And a lot of things budgeted, it's one of the higher CIPs we've ever had for the electric fund, but. Um, we realized earlier on in the fiscal year that really successfully do these the way that we wanna do. We should have on call engineering, so we needed to go out for on call engineering first before we really. Kind of deep dove into the rest of these bigger projects that we have, so, um, one of them being the, um. The, uh. The. The cir- yeah, the circuit interrupter. Circuit interrupters, so, um, we have money in the budget for circuit interrupters, which are. A form of the automation, um. But we felt like if we are going to do this, we need to make sure we do it right, so let's get our engineers on board, they can help us figure out what are the. Absolute best, um, circuit interrupters for us and where they should best be located, so it's the same thing with the. Um, contracting out the conversion, we wanted to get those engineers on so they can help us kind of through that process a little bit. And make sure we're doing everything the right way before we just deep dive into.
Let's just go ahead and give a direction, if the board is okay with this direction, to go ahead. And move forward, whatever you need to do to get that rate study done, so I'm a big, I think we need that rate study.
Sure, we can do that, so the. The reason why I went down that avenue there was because, um, we've gone out for bid for on call engineering. And we're currently under contract, we've selected and we're under, or working on contract negotiations. Which has taken us a little bit longer than we anticipated, so we planned for it to be on the last meeting, now this meeting, and now it's the next meeting. But they, the company that we have selected, one of the main reasons why we selected them was because they have numerous. Ex- examples and, um, experience working on rate studies. And not only just rate studies across the country, but local rate studies as well in the Missouri area and, uh, western Missouri.
I, I will say the twenty twenty one study that you provided to me, they said next to nothing about business rates, so we wanna be sure that.
Yes.
They do a study on the business rates.
Yes, we'll definitely make sure that they, uh, lean into all the different classifications and how. How we fund those, yes. And if there is, also, I'd like to ask a question to them, if there is a need to reclassify our structure as well.
Do you have the direction of the board, are you forward on that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just had a couple of comments in looking at this, and first I wanna say, I think that the bedrock and the. The bridging of the strategic plan is that we need industrial and commercial in our community, we solve. Some of our electric raised a lot of problems and, and I think, um, I have to give kudos to Shawna because she brought this up several times, that we've kind of been behind eight ball. When it's come to community development, so it's just showing right here that community development is affecting. A lot of things, and I think that in, in looking at the strategic plan, that we need to. Continue to stay focused on getting more industrial, commercial and doing more community involvement, I think that's been. Something we've been lacking, uh, for a long time, um, secondly, I'm wondering about, um, on the technology that we need to bring in. Are we, are we ever overlooking any grant opportunities or, you know, is there. You know, is there money out there that maybe we just are not seeing to bring us into, you know, more technology? Or would they ever, you know?
There's, there's been some grants from across that are, in reality, the grants like what you're referring to with. Um, the circuit interruptors and things, that would be a very small grant when it comes to the big picture of what electric grants look like, a lot of times they're. Multi million dollar, larger projects, but I think what's held us back from that is the lack of kind of planning, like. Having the ten year plan, having like, for example, this year being the first year that we put. A large amount of contract labor on, on the budget, that's something that we could apply for, but we just haven't had the forecasting and. Um, ability to kind of see the out years of that, so I, we've had a different change of, of mindset, I think. And that's gonna allow us to.
Strategic planning, the community development, maybe that's gonna open up.
I think it'll. Yeah, allows me a lot more proactive when it comes to.
This is great, and the third thing I wanna say is our retention of employees, um, seems to, this is a big cut. In response time and, you know, not that, you know, we, I think we need to look at that, and I know you're. Working on that with this group about, you know, to do that, but I, I, I would like this, this. Group to continue to look at how we can retain, especially in our electric department. Um, to retain these, what's happening, they're training and moving on or? Um, it's vital, I think that we have electricians and riding men and journeyman on our staff and do what we can to retain them, especially. But when it comes to budget time or we're talking about this, I, I hope we bear that in mind, so those are my three things that focus that I just.
I think it's difficult for the electric municipal owned electric industry as a whole. Uh, because where there's not very many of us that provide electric at the municipal level. So our competitors, just with, with the comparators for the study. Our comparators for electric are across the entire state of Missouri.
Right.
As opposed to just, you know, our general region. But because there's so few municipal owned electric companies, we're having to compete directly with your, um. Like par electric and, and these larger companies, even Evergy, that are able to pay astronomical. Ri- salaries that we just cannot compete with.
Well, and we probably can't be at their level, but there's gotta be, we, we need to retain these, you know, we need them, so.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
Anything else?
I think this is great. We'll, we'll bring the, um, electric engineering contract, the on call services, we'll bring that to the next meeting. And we'll, we have a kickoff meeting with them, uh, this week as well, so we'll. Uh, get those conversations started and, and try to get the rate study off the ground as soon as possible, as soon as we sign the contract.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Get closer, be deep. Next scheduled meeting is Monday, we've been mad. And we'll talk to Randy Alderman. Saying that, we'll take a motion to a gathering on Saturday. No motions, I get all the favor. Six year, we are here.